Okay, it is six o'clock on the dot. So we've got Austin Jones virtual and Mary Grafer virtual. Kyle Lewis is running a little bit late. So he will be with us shortly. So let's stand for the pledge leaders. Do we have any student leaders with us tonight? No?
Oh, my God.
Oh, you want to lead us?
Lead the pledge.
Thank you. Okay. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second. Thank you. Dave and Beth? And the all of you? Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks. We're going to get there by new business. Okay. MSBA report.
January edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. The start of the 2024-25 school year was a challenging one for many. In a 10-day period in 2024, Missouri had 310 threats of violence to our public and private schools. The threats disrupted learning, distressed students, families, and teachers, and have ongoing costs. On December 5th and 6th, MSBA Center for Education Safety Team hosted a two-day safety summit titled "The Secret to Great Crisis Communications and Emergency Planning." The summit was designed for a wide variety of school leaders, and the content focused on crisis planning for school settings. Attendees were able to learn from several of the nation's leading experts in crisis management. Oliver, our one board member and MSBA Vice President Paula Hubbard attended the summit and said that as a school board member, it is vital to receive continuous training on school safety.
As a school board member, I think it's just tantamount in our responsibilities to know what's happening in school. Safety is changing all the time. The technology is changing all the time. How we can do it better is changing all the time. The more we know and the more we can take back to our own district only helps us keep our kids and our staff safe. And that, as a school board member, as a school board leader and a community leader, is one of my primary responsibilities.
Hubbard says that school board members are a large part of a team that sets the tone for school safety in their districts.
I think one of the most important things I could do as a board member is help set the priority for our district. We designate the dollars in our budget. We allocate the time at our board meetings to discuss this. We set the policies that the entire district operates by. And so if it's not a priority to us, it can't be a priority for the district. We can't be just allocated to one person, one designated person, to handle safety for the entire district. It takes all of us. It takes our school. It takes our community. It takes our region. We have to be able to respond. We have to think ahead. We have to plan ahead.
According to Hubbard, investing in school safety sends a message to the community.
I hope it says to our, our community that our priorities are right. That the most important thing to us is you and your children. If we can't protect our children, what else are we doing? That's our priority. And so when we ask our community for help and we say, this is what else we need, we've told that story over and over that we care about you. We're going to demonstrate how we care about your safety. And so we need to partner together to do some things. And so sometimes when parents can't get into the building as quickly as they would like, and we hear that sometimes, why do I have to go through the locked door? Why do I have to have a background check? It's because you care about your children. And we've told that story enough that we have fans in our community who can also tell our story, who can say, no, no, we need this in our community. We've got to keep ourselves safe. We've got to keep our kids safe.
Kelly Wachel, Chief Communications Officer in the Park Hill School District, says that continuous learning on school safety is a community demand.
We know that safety is a priority in our communities, in our school districts. And safety is not a one-time thing. It's an ongoing, evolving emotion, feeling, fact, procedural piece. And so it's a continual learning piece. We're always learning those practices, what we can do differently, how we can adjust, how we evaluate what's working well. And so our community demands from us that we know a lot about safety and we know a lot about how to respond and care of people to keep them safe. So our community demands that, wants that rightfully so. It's our job to continue learning and continue practicing and continue evolving with what the best safety procedures, practices, solutions are.
Visit the MSBA website for information about upcoming safety trainings and events. As always, money matters. MSBA has upcoming workshops and webinars to help you plan for your next school budget. On Wednesday, February 5th, MSBA is hosting the Budget Planning and Preparation Workshop in Columbia. This workshop provides something for all administrators who are responsible for developing and presenting the annual budget. And on Wednesday, March 5th, don't miss the Long Range Financial Planning and Budgeting webinar. Plus, register now for MSBA's Spring Advocacy Series. This series helps you connect the classroom to the Capitol and make an impact in shaping education policy. The large incoming class of freshman legislators in the Missouri House and Senate means your insights as a local school leader will be critical, and your connections can really make a difference. Log on to the advocacy luncheon learns for the latest updates in the legislative session and plan to attend MSBA's Advocacy Day and Student Showcase with your school board to meet your legislators at the Capitol on March 11th. For more information about all of these events, visit the MSBA website. That's it for this month. Thank you for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in February for the next MSBA Board Report.
Does anybody have anything they want to add to the MSBA report? Mary, any updates that you want to share with us?
No, I have none at this time.
And you will be awarded March 11th, correct, at the Advocacy Day?
Yes, I will.
Is that true? Yeah, okay, good. We're looking forward to it. We're looking forward to it.
I'll be receiving an award that day. So yes, I'm very honored and humbled.
Well deserved. Okay, well, thank you, guys. And tonight, we have Representative Jeff Myers with us to talk about just a legislative update, educational bills, anything that you want to, want to share with us. So I'll give the floor to you. Thanks for being here with us.
Thank you. I will confess, though, we just started in the session. And so bills are now, just now being referred on, on that side. I, I was appointed the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, so that's kind of been eating up a lot of my bandwidth as far as that. But I was perusing through their, through the bills that have been referred. Hey, Kyle.
Good, Jeff.
Oh, and the two things that I kind of saw, one, that several people have filed, it's been referred to already, or referred to committee, is electronic devices during instruction hours. That's been a nationwide thing that's kind of been going on. I'm sure teachers can attest to the amount, the cell phones start to become a distraction inside a classroom. So there's different ways of how you could do that, whether you put them in a locker during instruction time, that you pull them out when they have a break, but they go back in. And it's, it's a measure that when, when I heard about it, I, I support it just for the simple fact of, I mean, it's the, just, let's just take a look at like social media and all the things that goes on, how that, you know, the algorithm and everything, keep you scrolling and scrolling and scrolling. If we can kind of move that to where our teachers can focus on our kids' learning, that's, that's something that's important to me. And then the other one that I saw was that had to do with registering if you're going to be a homeschooler. You know, you have to do that for your needs for family-based education. But mainly, I would, if you guys have any questions, I'll be glad to kind of answer what I can on what things are going on, so.
Well, I think we have, you know, just a couple of questions. I will start, though, with, with Mary. Do you have anything that you want to ask Representative Myers?
No, I, I appreciate you being there tonight, Jeff, and I look forward to being in contact with you during this upcoming session. I'll be there in March with the retired teachers and then I'll be, no, in February with retired teachers and then in March with Missouri School Board Association. And just, I know your, your mother was an educator and just keep in mind what's best for kids.
Well, that, that is what I focus on. You'll have to come up to the fourth floor. I'm no longer down on the first floor in the small little office. I got about three extra square feet. I got about three extra square feet in the window, so I can tell if it's where you are.
The windows are important.
That's great news, yeah. That's good. That's great. Well, I look forward to visiting with you on those, those occasions.
Me as well.
Austin?
Yes, thank you. First of all, let me apologize for not being there tonight. I know I called you back in November and December and asked if you were going to show up for our January meeting, and thank you for showing up. Amy and I had a conversation a little bit, and, you know, one of the, one of our legislative priorities as a school district is increasing bonding capacity from 15% to 20%. And from a, a district that's growing and needs facilities, that, that is something that would be very important to us. And I think it would also ultimately be important to the Warren County R3 school district. So I don't want to belabor the point too much, but I preemptively asked Brent through Amy that if you had any questions on what, from a financial perspective, on the safety of school districts being able to shoulder 20% bonding capacity, I think Brent graciously agreed to answer any questions that you may have. And maybe he could give you his contact information, so he can give you a objective view of what 20% would look like. One of the things that Brent tells us as he talks to us is other states allow a higher bonding capacity, and I really think it would help the Wright City in particular, but other districts that are growing throughout the state. So if you could just talk to your education buddies in Jeff City about that, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you for listening.
I will, I will ask them about that specifically.
Okay. We're going to start down with you, Kyle.
I think the only thing I have is kind of echo what Austin said a little bit. I think Kansas has some legislature that even maybe goes a little bit, that's some legislation that goes a little bit further and really allows capacity based on the financial health of the individual districts. So they have to like submit an application or something to their equivalent, their DSA, and they're either approved or denied. And I think the only thing that I would add to that is, at least specifically for us, and, you know, Wright City is a district that's going to grow a lot, being able to have that higher bonding capacity can definitely result in taxpayer savings for our residents instead of having to break stuff up into, into phases because if we have to make decisions on if something, an option can't fit into a phase, then we have to come back three or four years later. We don't know how inflation works. If you go out to an RFP, to a construction company, it's going to be higher every single time you go back.
It ever does come back cheaper.
Nope. So I would, I would, I would echo that. Really appreciate to see, you know, what some thoughts are from you and your, and your peers in Jeff City. So appreciate it.
I'll just echo two points because he hit on what I was going to say. At the end of the day, it does save taxpayers. And if you have a process that you're concerned that some school districts can't afford 20%, do something like Kansas and make it an application, you know?
Can we make sure we're all speaking up so they can hear us?
Yeah.
Yes.
I know you don't have a crystal ball, Jeff, but you did mention that you're, there's a couple of things involving education already. What, what do you predict or foresee will come down the pipeline that's going to factor in schools, public education?
Um, so obviously, the things that we passed last year dealing with the teachers' raises and, and funding that, I committed to doing that along with all my other colleagues. So therefore, making sure that that extra money gets put in the budget is something that, that I want to make sure happens. If you've heard Governor Keough speak at all, he's a very pro-school choice governor, so I would imagine there'll be some modifications to that as well. That's going to be coming along. I don't know what those, those have been filed or referred to committees, if they've been filed. I think we're about over 14 or around 1,000 bills right now that, that just keep piling up. And so just the bandwidth of trying to keep track of all that stuff. I, I do think you'll be seeing some school safety things, some of those measures probably being pushed out as well, whether it's the, the film on the windows or hardening the doors a little bit, things of that nature. Those are going to be hot topics. I've read one bill that has been referred, has to do with, there was one on like bleeding issues, stop the bleed type training for teachers, and the other one is, that has to do with cardiac events and, and training, I think, that goes along with that. So those, those are just, as I perused, what's been referred to, that along with the, the cellphone usage as well, so. And I'm, I'm sure there'll be more pop-ups as, as things go on. And whatever the sentence got going around right now, I can't even tell you because it's just, my place has been kind of full, so. Thank you.
I don't have anything additional. I was going to ask kind of what you're hearing from Governor Keough, and you kind of alluded to that, but thanks so much for being here. We really appreciate you. Appreciate you representing us here in Warren County.
Oh, thank you. It's been an honor.
Well, thank you for being here. Thank you for your work on the Public Safety Committee. Just a couple of things, as, as you were talking about, the work on, on school safety that's going to come up, and I'm sure that your committee might kind of homing in with that with your background in law enforcement. And just kind of talking about bonding capacity, you know, all of that helps. I know a lot of schools, Wright City's done a really good job of, you know, continuing to make sure that our vestibules are safe and there's dual entry. But, you know, we're fortunate and we only have a couple of buildings. So if you look at other districts that have older buildings or multiple buildings, you know, that's a lot of money to, to be able to get all those vestibules done or put all that safety glass on, or, you know, the film on there. So just kind of echoing what those, what my other board members said and taking a look at the bonding capacity, that's going to go a long way in helping to ensure that our schools can, can make all those updates around the state. The, as far as, you know, money in the budget, certainly appreciate that and just, you know, looking at making sure that that doesn't then steal from another pot like transportation, something like that.
Those, those are transportation costs, I know, that were added in there.
Yeah, okay, good.
There's a couple of other things to, measures that are working on that will provide some additional funding that will be directed towards education. If, you know, understanding, as you all do, running a budget, you know, you have your different pots of money that you draw from.
Right.
And then whatever comes out of general revenue, it can, you know, it's like sloshing water out of a bucket, right? If you pour more in, it spills out the other side.
Yeah.
Well, it's still full. But I, I do kind of, but I understand what you're talking about, so.
Yeah. Two more things, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Salvo. The, you know, the thing that, well, school choice, one of the items that we talked with MSBA as part of legislative priorities, and is any of us have talked to legislators individually, you know, our thought has been, and I don't want to speak as an entire board, but I will because, fine, but make sure that it's apples to apples. So make sure that everybody has, if, if it's going to be paid with taxpayer dollars, make sure that the same requirements are on whoever is getting taxpayer dollars. They're also going to be required to educate all children to the same standards. Okay. And then just finally, keeping local control, you know, small government is, is good, local control. I appreciate cellphone not being used. Wright City has done a really good job. Our administrators ask any middle schooler about what happens in Wright City if they have their, their cellphone out. And that's something that we were able to put in place. So again, I think that's just a, you know, example of local control and local policies being able to be put in place, but I certainly appreciate that.
On the, on the cellphone usage, and I, I don't want to speak out of school, so to speak, but it, the purpose behind that coming as a state statute, right? Provides that framework for schools to be able to adopt that.
Yeah.
Or opt-out.
Yeah.
Right? So if you, if you're a school district and you want to opt-out, giving you that local control, then you can do so, but here's the framework if you
Yeah.
...need something to lean on to say, this is why we're going to do it.
Well, I, well, I appreciate that and, you know, please use the resources that you have here in Wright City. We, of course, want, want you to be successful, and you do a good job representing us, so, you know, please use Dr. Salvo and Dr. Way and Dr. Broadway for, for resources as you need them.
Certainly will. I don't, I don't need to know everything. I just need to know people.
Yeah, right, right.
I greatly appreciate you taking the time to come here and, and speak openly about bills that will be coming in your area right now. Public safety, safety is always a top priority of mine, and we've put some new things in place, you know, this year to continually keep safety at the forefront. And I'll just kind of echo what the board member said on all of it and what Erin talked about, when, if there's pro-choice or school choice, I would just ask that the same accountability measures, you know, if a school can turn any child away, to me, it's every student, every day. And it needs to be apples to apples of holding people accountable. So when our taxpayers or public views data, it's not skewed. That, to me, is just very important. And I'm sure, as your mom was an educator, she would speak to that as well. But I appreciate you taking the time, and I look forward to working with you.
Very good. Yeah, it's, I, I try to, again, when it talk, when it comes to talking about different areas of expertise or, or, you know, hey, how does this affect you? I, I don't have a problem reaching out. And yes, I know that when we, when the whole, the school choice is, is quite a, a hot topic at times. But the thing that I look at is, is I try to make sure to balance out, you know, there's, there's, I, I do think that, that parents having that, that say in their child's education, but also understanding that we, as a state and as, as government in general, bear the burden to make sure that our kids can read, write, do math, you know, the basics, so therefore they can participate in society. But the, having that parent be able to decide how their kids do that, and then being, you know, the, the moving, moving around of the, of the tax dollars and how that works, I definitely understand why it's a concern for, for school boards. But I, I do think, you know, with some other states and how they've been able to make it work, I think that Missouri is looking at what, what are those best practices? And, and so those bills that come up are, are really tailored towards that, making sure that we don't shortchange our school districts. I mean, I, I don't know how many retired school teachers we have in there, but one of my best friends up there is a retired teacher as well. So, yeah, we, they, they, they watch out for their, their public education system and, and the different groups between the teachers and the school board administrators and, and the school board, or the school administrators, School Board Association. They, they come around on a regular basis just to provide their, their point of view, so.
Our public education system. Not theirs, ours.
Yeah. Agreed.
Well, thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it.
Anybody here got any questions? I don't see any tarred feathers. All right, big one, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, this is, yeah.
Okay. I'm sure that would be. I will.
Yeah, this is who Austin volunteered to teach you all about, school financing, funding.
Happy to have you come today. Thank you.
Give your call.
Thanks.
Okay. Do we have any public comments tonight? No public comments. All right. Well, then we'll get to the fun part of the early childhood presentation.
Okay. I'm going to start tonight. So one of my hacks that I wear here is I'm the Care to Learn liaison. And so for those of you who are not familiar with the, what Care, our Care to Learn program is, we are an organization, we help kids that need support with a health, hunger, or hygiene need. So if a principal, counselor, teacher, anyone that works in the schools notice that a student needs a new pair of shoes, needs some clothes, they know that they possibly might need a voucher for groceries, anything. We bought washers, dryers, refrigerators, all those types of things. They can come to me and I can get them a voucher, or I can call and pay for medicine that they may need. I was looking today in our school district, and we, we partner with Care to Learn, which is out of Springfield. It was started by Brad Pitt's brother. So they're, they've been around since 2016, and that's when we joined them. We've raised over $119,000 for Care to Learn. So that money goes right back to our students. Any student that has any need, that's a health, hunger, or hygiene, we can help support them. So since we've started, we have been able to give out $94,000 worth of vouchers. Like I said, we've bought mattresses for students that didn't have, or bedding, all, all kinds of things. So today, I wanted to recognize Mr. Paul Gott. He has been instrumental in helping support our students through him and his church. They've helped raise money for Care to Learn. They've donated coats, all kinds of things. So you want to come on up here with me? I didn't tell them what we were going to do. So once a year, he calls me and says, hey, can you come and talk to my church? So we'll set up a date, and I go and talk to his church community on a Sunday morning, and they ask all kinds of questions, and they are more than willing to help support our students. They're out of Lake St. Louis, so I think that's great, and I thank you for all you do for our kids.
Well, I appreciate that very much. Just tell you a little bit how that works. I was, the minister there contacted me, she knew us from this area, and so it was at her initiation that she talked to me. And then Mary Grafer pointed me to Care to Learn, and so that's how we got started. We, what we have is, in August and September, okay, we have a, a drive to raise money for our clothes or various, if there's items that you need, that's, we're receptive to that. The other thing is, okay, we've got those two months allocated, and, and we've been fine in bringing, you know, explaining that to the church. But now, outside of those two, two months, you know, if something special comes up, feel free to contact us because I talked to the manager there in case that would occur. She said, well, sure, we'll see what we can work out.
Well, I thank you, and this is for you, our appreciation. And then I have one to take back to your, to your church as well.
Oh, well, thank you.
So thank you. Can I get a picture with you?
Sure.
Right there next to me, it's for us. Hold that up nice and proud.
I'll hold one if you want. Okay. Thank you. Next, I brought this on my teachers today that they were coming to talk. So actually
I'm saying, you mean, like, four o'clock?
Right, four o'clock. They're walking out the door like, oh, are you coming tonight? Yeah, I'll come. Oh, good, you're going to talk about this. So, no, I told them like, hey, I, a couple of them are going to talk about some things that they're doing in their classroom. And then it was a really difficult, I know in the past I brought some of our friends in to sing, but I didn't want to single anyone out and say, oh, just this class, so we are going to spotlight all of them here in a minute. So Amy, you want to start?
No.
Okay. Nicole, Nicole, sorry. So Nicole is going to talk about our young athletes. Nicole, sorry. So, Nicole is going to talk about our Young Athletes Program that is part of Special Olympics that we do in early childhood. So- Nope, go ahead.
So, I'm one of the early childhood special education teachers and like Kelly said, I'm talking about our Young Athletes Program. So, for the past several years, Early Childhood has participated and Young Athletes as part of Special Olympics, there were, like, has always been a curriculum for ages three to eight that can participate. So, in the past, only our Friday Friends did this. That was our special education students until this upcoming year. This takes about 15 or 20 minutes of our classroom time. It's embedded in our routine and our structure. The program has been shown to improve self-confidence, inspire joy, and get our kiddos moving. The overall goals for Young Athletes are to support social inclusion in play, encourage children with and without disabilities to learn and play together, and then provide children with activities and games to meet their skill and ability level. It also helps empower all to see the students' abilities and their future potential. Each week, students do engage in active games, songs, and other play activities that help children develop motor, social, emotional, and cognitive skills. It also helps students develop those expectations, rules, boundaries, patience, sports readiness, and acceptance. The program focuses on the foundational skills like walking and running, balance and jumping, catching and then throwing, striking, kicking. And then it kind of reviews like all of the sports, the left, towards the end. Last year, I don't know if you've seen us, we played a huge baseball game. My son's baseball team let us have faces. My uncle donated a whole, a whole bunch of stuff and we played a big game of baseball as our final two rock for Young Athletes. This program is really easy to do. It is really fun for all of our kiddos and they really all benefit from it. You can't go wrong walking down the hallway like an animal. It can be-
I could go wrong.
It can be done at home, in schools, or in the community, using the Young Athletes Activity Guide. It is online, it is free. And the basic, basic equipment you can find around your house or the classroom. We've used tape, we've used bean bags, Julie-
I know, with salt.
Julie sets it up every Friday for us. Thank goodness, because I'm sipping my coffee usually. She's breaking out tunnels, but no, it is really fun. It is great for our kids. We are so excited that this year we've gotten a little more organized and adding MOQ PK, that we are now doing Young Athletes through KU, through second grade intensive classrooms as well. So, it has gone to East and West. So, that's it.
Everyone's speech isn't though. Riley, you want to go?
Yes, I was told just a minute. I just wanted to highlight the fact that we, obviously the preschool, we focus on foundational skills. It's our goal, obviously, for our kids to go to kindergarten with some of those important kindergarten readiness skills so that they can be successful when they get there. I like to tell parents that we're teaching them to be functional learners, you know, we're teaching them the skills of the actual sitting in at the circle time, though following a direction, following a group plan. Those are kind of our big things, right? So that when they get to kindergarten, they can take all that information that they're learning and actually soak it up, right? But another way that we do that is exposing them to curriculum pieces that they will also see in kindergarten. And so, we do foundations and hegemony in our classrooms, and so we work those into our daily schedules. So that when they get to kindergarten and they hear things like the grass line, the playing line, it's not the first time they're hearing those things, right? They're not novel ideas for them, they've heard it. So then when they have to implement those things, it's easier for them. So.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. My name is Sadie Tally. I am one of the teachers in the MOQ PK classroom. A lot of you might have heard me. I was the teacher who almost died.
But now she's great.
But I'm glad that maybe she's great.
Yeah, she is a cutest little thing.
Yeah, everything's going good. Anyways, our classrooms help prepare students who are about to enter kindergarten. We focus on kindergarten readiness factors such as independence. So, we work a lot on putting your own coat on, zipping your coat if you can, getting your own folders, putting them in your backpack, you know, being independent, not relying on an adult to do everything for you. Trying to open your own packages. Like in my class, we did a, you know, we had a cookie party when everybody opened their own milk. Right now, we're working on zipping your own jacket. Once everyone does that, we're going to ice cream party. We're doing things that way, you know, the kindergarten teachers aren't trying to take care of thirty kids all the time. So, we also do things like problem solving, you know, what can you, how can you solve this problem on your own without asking your teacher to do it for you? Appropriate social behaviors. Are we going to be poking everybody? Or are we going to, what are we going to do that is appropriate? Are we going to stand in line? Are we going to be talking when we're not supposed to, sitting at the carpet? Our curriculum focuses not only on normal early childhood curriculum. So, like, whereas in their early childhood areas, they focus a lot on holidays, winter, fairy tale. Ours also has a lot of themed units like trees, clothing. We, my class just started today, reduce, reuse, recycle. So, a lot of things that they might not have exposure to. And we use, we expose them to that through like daily questions and read alouds and different kinds of books that might not be key books, per se. There are more books on those topics. Yeah, more of an educational book. So, that's how our MOQ-
For the MOQ PK classrooms, we had to have a DUCY-approved curriculum. Whereas the curriculum for the special education classrooms, that is the curriculum they've developed. Where we're looking at the Missouri Early Learning Standards, incorporating them. Whereas these classrooms in order, and Amy's going to talk about this in a, for a second, it had to be a curriculum we had to purchase. So, I'll let her talk about that.
Yeah, so we, our classrooms for the, or Amy Westers, I should say. We use a creative curriculum. One of the great things is it's aligned to the Missouri Early Learning Standards. So, that's like nice to know as a teacher that you're hitting on those standards. Provides like intentional teaching experiences, one of the things that has in it, activities that focus on areas of social, emotional, physical, language, cognitive, literacy, and mathematics. So, like, for example, today, I think ours was called like Cookie Car. Children had to identify different shapes and then they use those shapes to make like a fun car. It also has an area where you can like assess students and document their progression, like based on those intentional teaching experiences and like how well they do. So, you can add your class and then you can teach those experiences. And then it lets you kind of see their progression and like where they're at, if they need extra support, or if they're like right on track, if they're learning. We have like mighty minutes cards that are really fun. They're like, if you have like five or 10 extra minutes in class and like nothing to do, you can pull out like one of these cards. And it's really fun, like engaging activity that focuses on like rhyming, or math, or syllables, which begins like a lot of, sometimes it has like fun posters to go with it. There's a lot of books like Sadie talked about. Some of the books have like discussion cards that you can use with the book, different questions to ask them before you read and after. We have a question of the day that comes with it. Fun outdoor activities that like focus on growth and motor skills. And then the, their website that you can use like as a teacher has like a lot of great resources where you can like connect with other teachers or ask questions.
There's professional-
Professional development courses that you can take. So, yeah, it's been really great. I really like it, especially as a first-year teacher. It like lays everything out. You can get online and like shows you your whole day and like what to do.
There's assessments.
Assessments, yeah, that are very helpful.
I'm looking into, so Sadie and Amy are, go through training through DUCY and through KU and where they come and they coach them every month. And this is all part of the MOQ PK. You have to be a part of this quality assurance program. And so, now they've opened it up to any of your classrooms in your early childhood center. So, there's a packet about pretty thick that they went through. And so, it's something that I, I'm wanting to do because then your preschool becomes a quality preschool. But they have to, we have to have that DUCY-approved curriculum. So, that's something we're going to be talking about in the next couple of weeks about adopting that curriculum for our preschools. So, okay, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we have a real quick video here we're going to show of our friends. Thank you to Riley and her husband for making this. I don't want to forget when Riley was throwing up and sick and not-
My whole family had a vote, but we-
But I'm like, did you get the video back? Amy needs it today.
A deadline's a deadline.
Kelly, can I ask you a question while we're in that?
Yeah.
So, um, do you have to provide evidence back to DUCY that you're kind of sticking to their set curriculum?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. So, if we adopt that for the rest of the classrooms, we have to provide the same evidence?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, here we go. Maybe. Buffering. Always. Spinking. Let me try and turn their videos off and ours, just a second. Wearing orange lips and tap your nose. If you're wearing orange lips and tap your nose. If you're wearing orange lips and orange hairs, oh, and if you're wearing some orange lips and tap your nose. If you're wearing purple lips and touch your toes. If you're wearing purple lips and touch your toes. Great job.
Does anybody have any questions for Bea or for them?
I just want to say they do a tremendous job. It's a highlight when I get to come over to your building. Like, the kiddos are adorable and you guys work so incredibly hard and the kids are learning.
Yes.
And having fun. It's just, it's a highlight. So, I just want to commend you for the work you do. Like, every kiddo is engaged in so much fun.
They may be screaming or something, but-
They're having fun.
They're having fun. Thank you guys, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
All of us, six of them are wonderful.
Was that last year, I think it was this past year, that I got to come for just a moment?
Yes.
I said, I miss Riley's classroom. And I was so impressed. I was just there for a short amount of time, but all of the different skills that your class worked on in that short amount of time.
Sure, right, right.
Learning the letters and the letter sounds, finding new skills, actively engaging in your stories. It was, it was so fun and it was such a great environment. And everyone there was so happy.
It's a very loving, you know, motherly environment.
Yes, it was a great environment for a little. So, it was, it was a pleasure to see.
Who knows to you guys, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you ladies.
Thank you guys.
Thanks, Kelly.
Do what?
Okay, it looks like up next, our Wright City High School update. And I believe Mr. Christopher is here to give us that update.
Yes, thank you. I had asked him to come to kind of provide a update on timeline of things to come.
You bet, you bet. Well, so hopefully, the last couple of weeks, now that you're in the building, I haven't heard of any major issues, so it seems like things are going well. Hopefully that's the case. But yeah, so the students are in the building as technically about three weeks ago. But with the weather, it's been about, you know, last week and three quarters or so. So, leaving that, we still have some site work to complete. I'm not going to go back on this too much, but there was a bad study that had to be done. There was several months lost on the site. In effort to save the district money, we wanted to put a timeline together that, you know, basically just that work completed in three months, but certainly not over the winter months. So, what we're trying to do is come in late winter with a March 1st timeline and, and work towards June 26th as a completion date to get the rest of the athletic fields tied up and, and completed. But as we get into, so site completion, we still have rutting on the, on the hillside, the bleacher hillside that needs to be repaired and re-vegetated. So, as conditions allow, we'll go after that work. Additionally, seeding the disturbed areas around the building. So, about three quarters of the, the green space, you know, kind of looking east is vegetated. Some of that got rutted up by awnings and some other things that were put in place. As the weather cooperates, those, those areas will be repaired and taken care of. And again, in conjunction with the final grading around the building in those areas. So, here's a picture of the football field as it sits today. And maybe not as it sits today as a few months back, but we've got the metal building here, which is a Franger Metal Building. Basically, a long story short, is we've got this triple jump that was added outside of the footprint. To work our way back, we had to get the metal building set. And now we're working after, going after the pavement, getting all the final utilities completed in that area. Again, we can't do that work till conditions allow, till temperatures allow. We're looking to go after that work kind of mid to late February. What we're looking at here is the baseball field, very similar in that regard. So, we do have fencing around the baseball field now. It's just not all fully stretched. We have to do subgrade yet to get the turf in place. So, again, as conditions allow, we'll go after the subgrade, get the turf done, and then go to the tack league courtyard basically between the concession building and the back stands and every, all the areas where the fans are going to sit. Any questions or concerns on the site work or what that timeline looks like?
Um, I, I've probably asked this before, so my apology, but this is repetitive. Do we believe that the baseball field will be ready for the spring?
For spring? Absolutely not.
No, okay.
No, we're looking at basically July 1st term on that.
And then, you know, I know that we're kind of weather dependent at this point, but, you know, I remember your chart of, with all the X's and all the dates of here's, here's where we're at to, to follow along in progression. Do you still have that? Or is it still, is it just kind of all like at this point, when the snow melts?
No, so I've, I've got a schedule that's created and that schedule reflects basically February 28th through really June 1st is what the push date is, although contractually it's the end of that month. So, the focus right now is to do that work, ultimately starting the turf and doing those things around March 1st.
Yeah, okay.
There are, you know, some activities we'd like to get in as far as, you know, plumbing at the Franger Metal Building, you know, getting that worked in so we can pour the concrete, you know, as, as temperatures allow. Most of the things onsite, we're not going to be able to do until, until March. So, any other questions?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Are the, are the drain, I'm going to use the wrong term, the, the catch basins or drains or whatever we was waiting for to get seeded and grown, are they open and usable now or being used now?
They've, they've been being used for a while, Dave. So, on the, on the back bases, there's only one basin that doesn't have vegetation. That's just, just west of the baseball field. Everything else at least has the riprap in it and has, you know, straw vegetation around it or straw matting. Now, there's going to have to be some overseeding because, you know, again, in the spring, as weather allows. But it has been vegetated once, it just, it needs to be reseeded.
But they're open and you-
They are open and used now. Yes, sir.
Beth, do you have any questions?
I don't have anything additional.
Heidi?
I do not, thank you.
Austin, Mary, you guys have any?
I have nothing, thank you for asking.
I have nothing. Thank you for asking.
I don't have any questions. No.
Okay, perfect. Thanks. All right. Thanks, Bobby.
You bet.
I lost my job. Okay. Okay, so next up is our science labs. Dr. Salvo, do you want to walk us through this?
Yeah, so we have Eric with Bond, Chris with SSC and Bobby Christopher that can talk to this on how we're going to move forward with the science labs. So I'm not sure if who wants to take that. I'm looking for Eric. If you want to start or?
Start? Sure. So as you guys know, the science labs, we ran into an issue with the Amarin gas provider. And we've been working through options of how to get gas to the science labs to meet the code that Amarin is enforcing. And I think Wright Construction has developed a plan with their subcontractor to do that work over spring break. And then details of how it works, but basically the, I don't know if you're going to pull up that image. The gas lines are going to be provided from coming up out of the ground to overhead, so they'd be above the ceiling and then drop down to the lab table, the countertops. Yep. So in this image, right now, what's in the rooms? Everything's built in the rooms except for these vertical pipes, enclosures. They're really just, a pipe's going to come down from the ceiling that has the gas in it and the support for the gas line that the fire department wants to make sure everything's secure and safe so no kids can kick it, knock it, you know, gas come out and leak because they'll lose connection. So the pipe will be inside that and it'll be wrapped in a manufactured wrap that's a dark bronze, black color. And this is what it'll look like. This is kind of a visual for you guys. Bobby, you want to add anything?
Sure. Yeah, so Chris with SSC and Wegman and myself, we met with Amarin at their office about two weeks ago. And really, they really left us with two options. The overhead piping, which is what we're showing today, is really the preferred method. The only other option would be to come in, do some very invasive work below grade. And even doing that, it doesn't, it kind of marginally leaves room for interpretation on their end. So obviously the preferred is overhead. One of the nice benefits about doing this overhead work, providing this gas that way, is that all the work can be condensed and done over spring break. So therefore, you know, if you guys decide you need to use that space for summer schools, it's available to you. The previous plan, we were looking at going underground, but that was ultimately going to take up your entire summer in those four classrooms. So anything else there that you'd like to know?
No, I think from the design team, we're trying to let Chris chime in. We believe this is a better option. Amarin definitely likes it. They want it to be overhead. But we think it's a better option as far as safety wise and not just leaving this kind of up to humans being able to smell a gas leak. This is detectable easier. Chris, you want to talk about that kind of the system you guys put in that's not, it's above code thing?
Yeah, so I actually met with Amarin twice back in October too. And they're probably, they're pretty much giving us one option. They want us to put the pipe in above the ceiling. So the option, they like that option because it's available all the time. They do not want us to go the option below the ground because in their mind, that will not, in their mind, it's going to have an opening where the safety is to smell the gas if there's a leak. But it's above ground and down through the ceilings, we've got the additional safety of the emergency shut off valve and also the snipers that will shut the gas open. And basically when we left the meeting both times, they're like, you really have one option. We really only see this black and white the way they interpret code that needs to be installed above the ceiling. So, I mean, I can get into all kinds of detail and go as deep as you want. You can just dive down the rabbit hole, but it's kind of like a.
Um, so I just want to confirm, this is at zero cost to the district, this change?
Yes, it's no cost to the district.
Thank you. And then two, with this change, because of all of our issues with inspectors, including that, is our fire marshal okay with this change? Because this is not what was in our original drawing. So has this been run by our fire marshal so that we don't get stuck not being able to come back into school over spring break?
So we've had conversations with him.
Has he seen it?
He has not seen the final approved, well, sketches that we've got. He hasn't seen that yet. But his input on it was, I want it wrapped and secured with Unistrut so that the pipes can't be dislodged by kids hitting and picking them. So that was his first input. I don't think he's.
And Eric, wasn't that first input because we were talking about maybe going under the tables?
Yes, yes. And the vertical. He wanted it supported and detected. So he's chimed in, but he hasn't done a final approval yet.
When will that happen?
As soon as you guys are good on that end. Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else ask, do you have any questions?
I assume both methods are pretty common, overhead and underground. Have you seen other schools do it this way?
Yeah, we've done it both ways, both underground and above ground. Really, I guess really what it comes down to is interpretation of code. In other jurisdictions, we've not had problems utilizing very similar methods underground. Really out here, there was no checks and balances until Amarin came to commission the gas is when this became a problem. I just want to go back and kind of say how we got here. So the underground work took place. You know, we had our inspection. So the building inspector, actually at the time, we didn't have a building inspector. This was at the time that the building inspector stepped away. So the fire inspector took over all those responsibilities. So the fire inspector did the underground rough and he has not had a problem with this gas system the entire time. This really comes down to Amarin's interpretation of the code. So that's how we got there. That's how it didn't get found, you know, wasn't an issue until the 24th hour essentially.
Austin has raised his hand. Okay. Austin? Austin?
I think he's locked up.
Oh, he was going to make a motion, he said.
Okay, let's keep going down the line. If anybody has any questions or comments? No?
Are you ready for a motion? I can make it.
Almost. Hang tight.
All right.
You're frozen for just a second.
Yeah, no.
Thank you.
My question is, we don't have gas to the chemistry rooms right now. How is that impacting the teaching?
I'll take that from the bottom. So, I'm sorry, man. I'm just going to bring up the butane canisters we've got in the little smoke stations that we have in here. We just got some of those in us. Same thing. Yeah, so in the interim, we're providing, really Wickers providing little propane burners and that'll be us by, so we'll have a permanent gas.
I mean, we have a solution. It's no cost to the district. This is just an example of it's curious that this came up at the final hour. I would have thought Amarin would have been consulted way sooner in the project than coming out to approve this. So now we are left with a over spring break project with a bunch of pipes dropping out of our ceilings that are coming up through the floor. So that alone is pretty frustrating and doesn't make sense. At all. Like, having all the major approvers in all this is what we do when we plan. And this is unfortunate.
Thanks, Kelly. Mary, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything at this time.
Thank you. Okay, Austin, if you have any comments, then I think we're ready for that motion, unless anybody else has anything they want to add.
I'll make a motion to approve option one as presented.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Seven oh. Thank you, guys. All right. Dr. Salvo, do you want to walk us through policy E H B V?
Yeah, so this was originally brought to the board. I had the pleasure of sitting in the audience, but not in this seat yet. And we had, you guys had discussed this and we said, can we pause? I always say there's power in, you know, in the pause on those things. And I said, I didn't want to move forward yet until an AI coordinator, we could name that and kind of move forward. So at this time, Dr. Holly Broadway Yates is ready to move forward with that. Anything you'd like to add?
No, I think a lot of times, so MSBA suggests the adoption of this policy. And I think a lot of times people think, oh, it's all about how are we going to discipline, you know, or are we just going to say we don't use AI? And that's really not what it's about. It's about laying out a plan for appropriate use for AI. And there are components like that to it, but it's important that we have the policy and then the policies will guide the district creation of an AI plan. So.
Questions?
Do you know the approximate timing that you have set aside to develop the plan?
Well, I don't have an end goal in mind, but I've started talking to some staff members. We'll form a committee of staff. There'll be some student voice to it, community voice, as we develop this. And so I'm in the, you know, when we adopt this, I'll be in the beginning stages of forming that committee and then starting the work of creating the plan. It'll be a lot of work on my end too, in the background with our tech department on the parts of the policy that have to do with information security. So.
That was my question. I wonder if you were forming a committee to get that together?
Yes, yeah. And what MSB recommends is that, I think the policy says that it be reviewed annually, but with as much as AI is changing constantly, they suggest that the committee review and update the plan even more than annually. So it's a committee that would continue. It wouldn't be a one and done.
Sure. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Austin has raised his hand. Austin?
Yes, thank you. As we, the one thing I did see here was, you know, some of the, some ways to govern AI. So a couple of things I would like to recommend is, you know, actually think about this, you know, think about open versus closed AI. And when I say opened AI, what I typically mean is it's available to the internet versus closed AI where it's essentially on, the data stays on-prem. You know, that's going to be, you know, and then the other issue is going to be the use cases when we use it. For instance, if we're going to use this for lesson plans, obviously you may or may not need an open AI to be able to look at the Missouri learning standards and stuff like that. However, if we're going to use this to look at kids' personal information or look at their test scores and stuff like that, you know, we need to make sure that we have the firewalls and the security protocols in place so that the data remains on-prem and not, and it doesn't get out on the internet. Because once it's on the internet, you know, that's it. You know, it's out there and it's nothing you really could do to reclaim it. So just, I mean, as I read this policy, it was, it really didn't have any meat to it. And so I look forward to you filling in the gaps and I'll be very interested in that. And no, I don't want to serve on this committee.
You can be on the committee.
No, no, I, actually, I tell you why I don't want to be on the committee, right? You know, I work in IT and I use this stuff at work all the time. It would be better if, you know, and when I use my expertise to read what you all have done, so I have objective eyes to it versus, you know, getting in the weeds and doing this. So I think, I think from that perspective, that might be a better use of my talents at that point.
We'll use them. Does anybody else have any questions or comments for Dr. Broadway Yates?
So with what Austin said, and if I'm reading our agenda correctly, we're going to be motioning to approve this, but I think it sounds like he's wanting to beef up policy or am I misunderstanding here?
So the policy just states that we're creating the framework for it. So we, correct, Dr. Yates?
Yes, yes. So the plan is where the meat will be. Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Right. And because we already discussed this in April of 2024, we can, if, you know, you all are comfortable, we can move forward and approve. Because it is truly just approving to get a plan in place. So if there's no other questions or?
Yeah, I would like to interject here one more time, please.
Okey dokey.
So when I read that, when I read above, there says this policy and other district AI policies and procedures. I think, I think our norm is we adopt the policy and then the administration develops the procedures and then we'll actually approve the procedures that they recommend. Or make our recommendations on those. So Kyle, to your point, it'll be those procedures. And a lot of times if you look at our policy manual, you'll see the stuff that says dot dash AP or something like that. Those are the procedures that we typically approve and are part of our policy manuals and stuff like that. So anyway, so I think that's what I look forward to reviewing and approving is those procedures.
Yep, fully tracking.
Thank you for listening.
Austin, I just, I misunderstood. We're good.
No, yeah. So if there's no other questions or comments, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve this policy as presented.
Show moves.
Okay, so Austin, motion, Kyle seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
No. Okay, motion passes seven oh. Thank you, guys. Next is an approval of resolution to call for a special election. Thanks for being here. And we have Mr. Blevins with us to walk through money and what it might look like if we wanted to get some more of it.
Yeah, appreciate being here. If you all remember, last time I was here, we were talking about your bonding capacity and the challenges that we had, which I think was mentioned to our legislators that was here earlier. So I look forward to that phone call, hopefully soon to have that conversation. So as we go through your bonding capacity, as you know, you cannot be in debt more than 15% of your assessed value. Regardless of what you can afford, you are bound by constitutional limitations in that 15%. So we went out and one of the things that we do, we've been working with the business office along with Dr. Salvo, getting some information, how your local taxes are coming in, the taxes we're expecting. Because that bonding capacity is actually calculated on the election day, which is April 8th. So we're looking at how those local revenues are coming in your Fund III. Barack's been helping us as well, being in contact with her between now and April 8th to make sure we're good to go. But we feel very comfortable. We were actually, one of the things that we did, districts, actually school districts are one of the only, actually the only entity, public entity that does not receive an assessed value from your local revenue utility companies. So we went out and solicited those assessed values to each and every one of your local revenue utility companies here in your school district. That takes a lot of time, effort, energy, and sometimes some twisting of the arms to get that information. So we got that, worked with the business office to look at your fund balances, how things were being collected. And we have come up with an amount of $11 million as your bonding capacity. You remember last time we were talking 10, 10 and a half, hopefully get a little higher. So we got $11 million of par that we anticipate. So on the resolution calling special election tonight, which is obviously in your board packet, is for $11 million, no tax rate increase bond issue. Now, as you know, the district can and we can go out. Now, as you know, the district can and we can go out and utilize some premium bonds. So when we go out and, and price your bonds, investors like those premium bonds. They have a little bit more value, but you also issue less debt because they're buying more above the par. That premium does not go against the district's constitutional bonding capacity. So we know you've got projects that are going to be close to, to the amount that you, the district's going to get. You've got additional projects. We feel like we're going to get total proceeds in your construction fund close to 12.5 million. So that's a little better than what we anticipated. We were hoping to at least get that. And we feel very comfortable with the $11 million of par and the premium based upon today's market that we'll be able to go out and get about 12.5 million of additional construction funds for you all to finish your projects. So I can answer any questions about the bonding capacity, how we go about doing that, where the 11 million come from. Again, the 12, the 12 and a half will depend on what happens between now and when we price the bonds. But we feel very comfortable that it's going to be very close to that amount as you're looking at your prices coming in for those projects.
Austin, where do you want to take? Austin?
Yeah, thank you very much for acknowledging me.
Always, always, Austin.
Yes, sir.
What do you see interest rates doing? You know, I know, obviously with the election of Trump, the, you know, he's going to pressure the Fed to lower interest rates. So what, what does your crystal ball say for interest rates over the next 18 to 24 months when we actually sell these bonds and, and procure the, the funds?
Yeah. If I knew that, I could retire, Austin. No. You know, the indication, as you all know, the market's kind of been everywhere. The election, we actually saw a real good movement in the market. We saw some, some bumps, which means that the rates went down for, for a week and we got excited about that. And then we saw it go right back. So right now it's been fairly stable. MMD has not moved a whole lot. It's kind of been up and down and stayed level. Like you mentioned, Austin, the, the initial assumption of what rates were going to do, they were kind of talking about three to four cuts in this particular calendar year. That's been lowered now, the feds are saying maybe one to two. But the overall assumption at this time, at least in the markets, that we will see rates continue to come down. Do I think they're going to come down significantly? Again, this is a Blevinism, so take with a grain of salt, but, but probably not significant. But I will tell you that, you know, the rates currently, you're a very highly rated school district. So you're going to get very, very good rates. Investors, we're going to sell a majority of your bonds, if not all of them, to institutional investors, not retail investors. Retail means individuals, because for individuals like us, it's not a very good investment. You can go out and probably put money in, your investments in money market accounts and get better yields than you would in school bonds. We typically sell these institutional investors because they are looking for a place to hold their money that is safe and secure. And with districts like Wright City with a very high rated S and P rating, underlying rating, that means investors will pay up, which means lower your yields so that they can have safe investments to put their dollars. So you, you all always get good rates. If we were looking at it today, we're looking probably, you know, somewhere in the mid to high fours. So that's great. If you were to go out and get a home loan or a car loan, you, you would obviously pay a lot more than that. So as a, as a school district and as a highly rated school district, you're going to receive very good rates. What happens between now and May, when we price your bonds, if this is successful in April, I would assume they would not be higher, but I would, if, if I think they're going to be anywhere, I think they will be lower.
So the next question I'd like to ask, thank you very much for that, first of all. The next question is, recall when we sold the high school bonds? Now, we were able to put the money in an escrow account and accumulate some interest. Where do, where do you see that for this time around, given the, you know, what we're planning here and stuff like that? Do you foresee us having significant interest revenue while we wait to start building? Or is that going to be insignificant this time?
It won't be as significant because it's a smaller amount. Obviously, the last time we issued a lot more bonds when we did your high school. But the rates are staying. I just talked to an investor that does a lot of investing for school districts, actually yesterday, when I was in meeting in St. Louis. And others can see over 4% on those investments. So that will all depend on a couple of things, where do rates stay? Because obviously if interest rates go down, then those investments go down with that. And secondly, how long that money will be setting in that escrow account, drawing and earning those interest rates before you have to go expend them, right? So depending on how quick those projects will be ready to start to moving forward will determine that draw schedule you have with your, with your construction management team will determine how many dollars that you'll be able to earn in those investments. But they will be, they will be still receiving very good interest rates as of now. And as you know, those, those earnings go directly into your construction fund for additional projects.
Aaron, I do have additional questions. However, I'm going to yield the floor for right now and let others ask questions to make sure. And if my question's good answered, then I'll, I'll let you know. But I'll let others ask questions, but I got some additional questions, so I'll wait.
All right, I'll come back to you, Austin. Mary, do you have any?
You got some, you're muted.
She won't let me.
What?
We got you muted again. She's gone.
Hi, Brent.
Hello.
I don't, do you have any questions right now?
All right, thank you. We're going to start this way now, Kyle. Sorry. Well, I've been picking on Beth, I've been making her start all of the questions.
Austin asked all the questions.
Okay, okay. So right now, just about the money, we're good?
In terms of the money.
Yeah, okay, all right, in terms of the money, good. You're going to hang out, though, for a bit?
Yes.
Okay. So Austin, do you have any more questions about money?
Well, my, my questions are the cost of, what the estimated costs are to do this project?
Mine, too.
And ultimately, will the proceeds from the bonds be able to cover the cost of the project?
Yeah.
I mean, that's something that Amy had talked to us about. And I just wanted, you know, I just wanted to have that conversation in public so folks know that we're, we're having that conversation. And so I'd like Amy to speak about that a little bit in terms of her confidence, in terms of the bonds being able to cover the cost. And so that would be, that'd be the next line of questioning when it's appropriate.
Yep. So, yeah, I was going to say that the language that's on the resolution that is in your board packet is for the amount of $11 million for the purpose of constructing, improving, repairing, renovating, furnishing and equipping new and existing high school facilities, including the construction of a performance gymnasium at the high school. So, Dr. Salvo?
To clarify, it's equipping new and existing school facilities.
School facility.
Including construction.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I've been in communication with Bond and Eric's here tonight. Thank you for saying, I asked him to stick around in case this question came up. And he did reach out to three people, three different companies. I asked for third-party estimates. And just as our representative Jeff Myers mentioned prior, that construction costs keep going up. And that is very, very accurate that we have seen. And even anybody personally that's built anything, construction costs just keep continually to rise and I don't see that changing. So he was able to get three estimates based on current drawings. And it was a large range. And I don't know if you want to speak to that, but it was a range, a swing from, I believe, nine to up to 12.
Sure. So we gave them the drawings that were part of the overall project when it was part of the main high school building. So the drawings aren't accurate to what would have to be built now. So we gave them that kind of caveat, but yes, so the range was 9.2 up to 12.2. One was 10 and a half, nine, like I said, nine, one, and then about 12, two. That's a big range, such a medium-sized project, I would call it. But a part of that is, you know, how much summer work do we get to do? How much are we working while school's in session, you know, and what's the timeframe? I put it at a 20-month thing, about four months on design, couple of months for permitting and bidding, which, you know, at least a month of that's the, or two months maybe for permitting and then up to 14 months for construction. Some of the, the guys I talked to could do it less time, maybe less than a year on construction. The goal would be to get it done by August of '26. So we're kind of right at that, that range right now if we start it today. But if we wait till, you know, April to start design, kind of pushes it back. But depending on the contractor, they still may be able to hit that August of '26 date. But that's kind of the range and why there's a range. Because there, a lot of gyms right now are being built as storm shelters, but we already did that for you guys. So this gym isn't storm shelter sturdy, it's got a lot less structural support in it. Mechanical systems are a little bit simpler. The, the existing high school that we did do is built to support this gym. So a lot of the infrastructure's there. So some of those things are simpler, which is hard to quantify when you don't have the drawings that are associated with it being its own construction project.
Eric, you said those, the estimates were based on the, you know, the drawings that we have now with it being, but obviously it's going to be different because it's going to be kind of its own structure-ish. So like, what, what would you estimate, knowing the additional parts that might have to go into that? I don't know what those things are. What would you estimate that would have to get tacked on to that cost?
The, there shouldn't be a tack-on cost, we may be able to save some, actually. So that's why there's a range, because what's in there now? As an example, you guys approved to add the metal building with locker rooms in it, which before was just a storage building. So now you have locker rooms for the football team and whatever down there. So the locker rooms that are part of the performance gym may be able to be reduced in size. So you may get like a storage closet, which is a lot less expensive than locker rooms. That's internal and it's a little bit easier on the mechanical side, too, to operate storage room than a can of, a can of for locker rooms. So there's some things like that that we shrunk and, and are changed. Even the concession stand has a lot of what, what can be put in it and what, what do you really need in it that may come down to cost. So that's part of the stuff that's, it's a little bit hard for them to quantify without a drawing saying this is what it is.
So in your best estimate, you wouldn't see it going above that 12.5?
I, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. Questions for building, construction prices, this stuff? I, I see you, Austin.
I do. The, it, I agree. It's no secret that construction costs are going up. However, even at the 9.2 million end, that is still above what inflation has been since the projects, the initial project began and was approved. We are the fiduciaries of the taxpayer money in this district. Any and every design change that has to be made from the initial drawings to what this would look like has to hawkishly be reviewed. And we have to hold these construction costs down to something below significantly what we're going to get this bonding for. There are other projects that are going to be required in this district. And anywhere and everywhere that we can save money, we have to. The, the 12 million isn't acceptable. The, personally for me, anything above 10 million isn't acceptable. So anywhere we have options to review, reduction in footprints, like you said, with the, with the lockers or other things, we, we have to know.
Austin?
Yeah, thank you. And again, I'm going to apologize in advance because normally I, I ask my questions beforehand and so that everybody's prepared for them. And unfortunately, me being out of town, I was unable to do that. So one of the concerns that I have is contingency. Typically, when we go into a project like this, we usually have like a five, you know, we usually have a 5% or 10% contingency or something like that for cost overruns, for, you know, surprises along the way and stuff like that. To Kyle's point, one of, one of the concerns that I'm, I'm seeing here is, based upon the estimates that we got and the, and the bonding capacity, I don't see that contingency being available to us. Can you speak to that, Eric? And also Brent, if you could speak to that, too? You know, because that would be, that would be something that, you know, we don't want to bite off more than we can chew, so to speak.
For, from our design side, we would definitely recommend that you hold 5% contingency on, on a project of $10 million. You would, you hold it and if something pops up, I think it's, it's just, it's available there. If we can find ways to reduce the cost of it in drawings and the redesign tweaks that we have to do, I think we'll, we'll look at it and bring it to the, to the staff and let you guys tell us which direction to go. I guess it just depends on where we think that, where the number comes in at. I don't know what the options are beyond getting us out of drawings that we did to find out if you guys are in budget. I, I just don't see it. Bobby's still here, he can probably chime in on it. I just don't see it being at 12 million. I don't, it's not a storm shelter. And the infrastructure we have placed, it's a flat site, as you've seen where it goes. There's not a bunch of site work that has to be done. There's some, but not a ton.
I mean, for instance, for instance, are we going to have some more soil remediation? So one of the lessons that I've learned when we built this high school, right, was civil engineering is very, very important, right? And so are we going to have soil remediation issues? The other thing I see is, you know, and I think Bobby, I don't know if he's still in the room or not, but recall when we had to put the floor in the, in the practice gym over there, we had to do that floor remediation because of the humidity. If, if we're building this thing in the summer, we're going to, we're going to have to do that. We're going to have to do that humidity remediation. I, I'll bet you my bottom dollar, we're going to have to do it, right? And yet, at the same time, when Bobby talked to us about that, he said, well, don't add that to the cost, just, just have that, you know, out there. So just for those, just for soil remediation and for the humidity on the floor to, to remediate that when it's, when it comes time to put the floor in, you know, I think that's, I think that's going to chew up a lot of a contingency dollars because, you know, it's 500,000 on 10 million. And then for every million or whatever, it's, you know, another 50,000 or whatever, right? So if you go to 12 million, we're looking at one to have 600,000 in contingency, right? So at 5%. So would 600,000, you know, cover a soil remediation issue as well as having to remediate humidity to put a floor in?
Bobby, do you want to speak to that at all?
If I could speak to that, Austin. The, the first thing would be the flooring types. You would not have flooring mitigation in this, in this building. With a performance gym, I, I assume anyway, you're going to have a wood floor, wood basketball court. So with that type of flooring product, it's not a ported place rubber like the auxiliary gym is. So there's other constraints that have to be, you know, met. You know, manufacturer requirement for insulation, temperature requirements, humidity requirements, air, you know, air humidity requirements. There are things that we have to meet. Those typically are found within the base bid, though. There, there should not be any need for mitigation in that area. Maybe the locker rooms, you know, again, I don't have the drawings in front of me, but as a district, you guys can take precautions on that and write a spec to include, you know, up to 99% mitigation or however you decide to rank that. Now, in terms of soil remediation, we really didn't have any bad soil there at the building where we had to remediate the footprint. My recommendation there, again, would go back to design and coming up with something of doing rock excavation below the pad as part of base bid. Again, there's costs there, but I would, I would go into it with a plan of attack, having some sort of granular fill below the slab. some sort of granular fill below the slab. So you would know those costs off the gate.
Okay, I appreciate that. And Amy, I guess the question I'm going to ask you before I vote on this is, you know, based upon what you're hearing, you know, what's your level of risk, a set, a risk aversion in this here and stuff like that? Because, and again, I apologize for putting you on the spot and not being able to ask these questions because I've been out of town. So sorry about that. I just want to publicly say that.
That's all right. Thank you.
But that's going to go into my decision here as to, you know, whether I think we should move forward with this or not, because I don't want to bond for money and then not have enough to pay for it and have to dip into fund four to, to, to end up paying for it. So that's all the questions I had. Thank you very much for listening.
So thank you. Thanks. I honestly think that after you speak to the professionals in the room and after speaking with Brent and Bobby and Eric, so our architect, our current general contractor, and looking at the way inflation costs go, the way our AVs going, I think economically for a district right now, the way cost, construction costs, which, I mean, I don't like that they're increasing, but the reality is construction costs, I mean, Jeff Meyer even alluded to that, construction costs continuing to rise. That's a concern of mine. It's just that how quickly construction costs are rising and if it being better for the district to do it now rather than wait a year, two years, three years on really what the cost then, what would the cost be at if we waited several years with the way that costs are going up? Is there anything you would like to add to that?
No, I think that's a good point. You know, when people ask me a lot, when's the best time to build? It'd be yesterday. And so as you, as you worry about your bonding capacity, what we try to compare is, is, is construction inflation going to outpace your assessed value growth? And you, you may have better information, but from what I'm hearing across the last several years, between 10 and 14% roughly, construction inflation somewhere around there, obviously depending on the project. And we don't anticipate an average AV increase of, you know, 14%. So the bottom line of this is a project that the board chooses to do at some time, sooner than later, there's not a cheaper time to do it than today.
Mary, do you have any questions or comments? And then we, well, my plan is to kind of go around and get everybody's opinion on the actual motion, but do you have any questions before we get to that point?
No, I think everything's been covered. I don't would want to ask it up. Thank you.
I do have a go back.
Yeah. Kyle?
And I totally just slipped my mind and I apologize, but a way that the district could potentially look at, you know, how we save money and how we manage these projects more efficiently moving forward, and this is more board conversation, is are we in a position now where we're, where it's appealing to look at potentially a construction manager to assist us on projects and exploring what that cost is and how that can go into this equation as well? This is something I want to bring to the other board members. We haven't used one in the past, you know, Dr. Berger, he did have a facilities-rich resume, but we know that there are going to be much larger projects in the future in front of us. Would this be a good project to potentially see if utilizing a construction manager would be appropriate for the district or not?
Yeah. Agreed. And I know we have, with, with Dr. Way's retirement coming up, we do have a posting for an assistant superintendent or director, depending on what we have, but would be operations and facilities heavy?
Yes, that's the main part of the job description. We're actually working it now to really try to draw in, and I'm making calls to like the Missouri Plant Managers Association and neighboring school districts. So we will be looking to fill Dr. Way's shoes in the bulk of that job description. The first part of it is really heavy on facilities and construction management.
Perfect. And if that's how we're going to mitigate it and we're essentially for all intensive purposes, hiring somebody full-time, even better, but it, we, we have a gap right now.
Yeah. Yeah. Valid, valid. Okay, so are, are we at a point where you guys are comfortable just kind of talking through the motion? Okay, so.
Does Dave or Beth or Heidi have any additional comments?
Well, I haven't gotten to that point yet, Austin.
They haven't said anything about money or construction, right? We're good? No?
Sorry.
I promise. I'll talk if I want to. I promise.
Okay. They're not necessarily a quiet bunch. Okay, so the, the special election proceedings as presented, so this would be an approval of resolution for calling a special election for April 8th to approve this $11 million bond for the items that we, that we have discussed. So we can just kind of go around and share, share your thoughts, concerns, pros, cons, whatever you want. Does anybody want to kick off? I don't want to.
I'll kick off.
Okay, I'll start. Beth's not going to sit next to me anymore.
No, no, you're good. You're good. So I've talked through, through this with Dr. Salvo, I've mentioned it to a couple of fellow board members. I, I am obviously supportive of the project itself. We have this beautiful new high school. We're so proud of it. We want the gym there so that we can host our fans. We want the high school to be completed. At this point, I am not comfortable with the timing for the April election and maybe something will be said here in the conversation that changes my mind on that. But when I think through it, to me, there feels like the right order of things. And I feel like if we, Brent, is it May that we would have to call for an August election? Is that right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Okay. To me, if we waited until May and put this on the, the August ballot, it would give us time to get updated enrollment projection numbers. We as a board could revisit the facilities plan that we put together that needs some updates. I think at this point, we can, again, with our enrollment numbers, we can address our elementary growth. You know, from a community perspective, there's huge community support to have our gym, of course. There's also huge community support to move fifth grade back to elementary. That is a huge priority for parents with younger kids in our district. So I think that would give us an opportunity to look at the enrollment numbers, update the facilities plan. And just to be honest, I think that would help Dr. Salvo and our incoming new assistant superintendent who's going to be focusing on facilities and construction, to have a few additional months to look at everything, to look at the plans and kind of get acclimated. That, to me, that just feels like the proper order of things. I understand there's challenges around the August election that we don't have in April, but we do have good community support for this. And if we feel like this is the right thing, this is what the community wants to do, I think the community will show up and vote in August, just as they would in April. So those are all some of your thoughts.
To her points, what happens if we wait?
From, from my end of things?
Yeah.
You're pushing it back six months or so? So, I mean, the price will go up 3% at least on construction costs, I would say?
Four months, right. Four months?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think that would be the main, the main thing that would change that I'm aware of.
And then obviously, would we be able to open in August to 26th or would that be questionable also? Depends on who we pick for our contractor, right?
Well, it would depend on if you have, you can do it two different ways. I want to, I think I need to talk about this. So you can do, you could have us do the drawings and have them ready to go out to bid. Like we could have them ready for an April bid or an August bid. You could have it ready to go and then if you put it on the ballot and it passes, then all you have to do is bid it and it saves that four months of the design tweaks that we have to do and working through with, with the staff and administration on what the building's going to look like and what's in it.
So you're saying we can save some time?
So you can save some time if you did that first step. If you don't, and we don't start till August, design, I don't, I don't think, I don't think it could get done construction-wise. We can, we can shorten our timeframe a little bit, like really crunch it, but not by enough to get it done. Even if, if our time shortens from four months to three months, if construction shortens from 14 months to 10 months, we're still past August.
Dave, do you want to speak? I'll take my turn. Let me go ahead. I follow what Beth says 100%, obviously. Should we have more time to plan? Yeah, shouldn't we always? I'm worried about the expense going up. I mean, the way that we've seen construction costs, it's, it's very concerning. I'm not as concerned about having space. We have an entirely empty building. And if we had to make stuff work for a couple of years, I, it hasn't been empty that long. We, we have a, we have a building. We promised the community we would finish this high school and the cheaper we can do it, the better, obviously, and that sounds like it's now. To Kyle's point, everything that we can do off those original drawings to still make it awesome, but save is, it needs to be looked at, like with a fine-tooth comb, all eyeballs I, I hesitate waiting till August, but that is a good option. We know we're going to do it, so to have them draw the plans early, I could be flexible on it, but I, I don't like the idea they save three or 4%. What if it's 10? It could be. We don't know what's going to happen. I, I would like to, if anybody knows how to know that, sign me up. But that's my comments for the time being and I may have more.
My turn. I, I agree with what a lot of, what Heidi said. I think that the, having the old high school there takes a lot of anxiety out of me because a building has been in use and is still very usable. The fact that we are building four more classrooms at East now helps that. I agree. I think the project is only going to get more expensive as time goes on. I, I just kind of think now is the time. I don't care for the August election because, is it 5/8ths then? Is that right?
It's, yeah, 2/3rds. 4/7th in April, 2/3rd in August.
So it's 4/7th in April and 2/3rd in August. I don't know. I, I, I agree. I think we, we kind of owe it to the community to, to get this project finished. We was awfully close to the first round, to being able to do all the projects and get the school done, but the 15% capacity, bonding capacity is what kind of ended that. And personally, I would like to see it move forward.
Your turn, Kyle.
You'll have to. You know, I, arguments, very sound arguments can be made on both sides of this so, so eloquently and so well. I would never want to debate you, Beth, by the way. The, the reality is, it doesn't matter what decision we make, there's going to be some sort of cost incurred. We're incurring a cost on the performance gym because we didn't have the bonding capacity. When this project was first approved, there was still rampant inflation going on, COVID. If we wait till August, we'll incur costs. If we don't wait till August and we have to move students to the new high school, we'll incur cost doing that too. It doesn't matter which way you look at it, we're going to incur cost. We're a growing district. These projects are going to have to take place either today or tomorrow. It's determining the order of what it's going to be done. But one of the lessons we have to take out of this is as we continue to learn from our growing pains of the district, is we have to really get good at understanding how our district's going to grow and looking at that data on a regular basis so that we're not in a position where, wow, I really wish I had this data in front of me that we're going to have in two months, when we know when we have to make bonding capacity decisions. So as a board, we have to learn from that, which we will. We have to because the projects are just going to ramp up over the next, over the next decade. But I, I do appreciate the, the opinions of my fellow board members, but I will, I will support this just because it's, we have to, we have to construct these projects. It's just the work that's going to happen. I definitely respect and understand the concern on the, on the student numbers, but we do have the high school there, so it's either wait and incur a cost there, or if we do have to move students, we'll incur costs there both physi, both fiscally and subjectively with, with the parents and we'll, and we'll have to own that decision. But I, I do think we can save total cost by deciding to do the performance gym now because it will just continue to creep up and it's going to continue to outpace inflation.
Mary?
I, I agree with, I agree with everyone, but, but my thing, what I'm thinking and Kyle has, have not, you know, there's no need for me to repeat it, but yeah, with the costs going up and, and what we've promised to our patrons and our students, I, I'm in favor of going forward with it.
Austin?
Yes, thank you. So let's, let's talk, let's talk about what Beth indicated. So I did talk to some parents and the parents want the performance gym because they don't want their kids driving across the highway, back and forth, to and from events and stuff like that. You know, they're just not comfortable with newer drivers, you know, having to drive across a biaduct and stuff like that. So I, I did have some conversations with parents about that. So, you know, that, that's a, a thing in the column four. So Amy, one of the things that, you know, you and I have talked about in the past is if we had to, let's say the, the population numbers came in surprisingly high and we had to utilize the high school if we went ahead with this particular performance gym, what would we exactly have to do to the old high school in order to make it ready for, for, for kids, younger kids, I'm assuming middle school kids, to utilize that building? Would there be a lot of, I mean, is it pretty much turnkey? We just move the kids in there and go down, move down the road or do we, do we have to do some sort of renovation over there? Or what does that look like?
But I'm going to punt some of this to Jeremy, but I will not call that building turnkey as I graduated from that building. I don't want to date myself, but I would not call that building turnkey. However, is it usable? What'd you say?
My parents.
Yeah. Yes.
My wife graduated from over there. I'll digress at this point.
Proud city graduate, but I would not call the building turnkey. However, is, is it usable? Yes. We could utilize the space if needed. You know, part of, it's great when a district grows. I've been a part of districts that grows, but it also comes with growing pains. So it's a lot of change for this community to go through growing pains, but we will survive and we'll get through it, but it gets bumpy. Growth gets messy because it's change. However, I can assure you, being in districts that has grown, we do get through it and you get stronger because of it. And a lot of it, you, you plan with what's best for kids with the information that you have, and we do know that construction costs are continuing to rise. The other thing that we know is we're building a four-room addition at East. So there's additional space going in at the elementary there now, and we know we have a vacant building to use. So as far as what exactly would have to be renovated for the space, I think part of that would depend on what grade level, if we needed it, would need to go into that space. How much of the building would need to be utilized? So it's that part of the information. We know we have space, but those particulars, Austin, I'm sorry, I can't answer that tonight. I would want more information, but knowing we have the space if needed, that's how I would answer that. And then I would turn it to Dr. Way to answer anything about specifics. And then I would turn it to Dr. Way to answer anything about specifics.
Let me rephrase my question before he talks, because maybe I didn't phrase it very well. So I guess the question is, would we have to, when I said turnkey, what I meant to say was, would we have to spend any money renovating that building to move kids in? Or do you think that we could get by with not spending any money to move kids back into that building? I guess I should have asked the question that way. I apologize.
I will say, as in anything, nothing's free. I wish I could make everything free and there would be no cost. But there's always a cost to everything. So I would say, yes, there's always cost. There's maintenance cost to keep all of our buildings up and running. If you think about having your house, you know, things happen in a house. I mean, roofs, HVACs, it costs for us to keep the building just up and running. So yes, there's always going to be things that have to be done. I will let Jeremy, who knows the building better than I, like the behind the scenes of what may have to be done to the building, but I would say we don't know at this time if we would have to utilize it. We just know that we have the space if needed.
Austin, we've had this talk before. Yes, there's going to be HVAC, there's going to be some roofs. It depends on what portion of the building we're occupying and what needs to be done, and how long down the road is this? Is this next August or is this two Augusts from now? You know, it's going to depend. But yeah, there's definitely going to be costs to operating and renovating that building.
Well, and the fact that you brought up operating, that's a good point because, you know, today, we have a, you know, the question is, if we had to move back into that high school and start, you know, running significant heat and air conditioning, would our operating budget support that? I'm assuming that the set value went up, you know, we would get some of the additional, you know, operating revenues to do that. But, you know, that's something to think about. I mean, not only do we have to have money to build, but we have to have money to pay the electric bill, pay the gas bill, and so on and so forth. And so I guess the question is, you know, are we going to hurt ourselves there and not be able to pay our bills?
But, I mean, Austin, respectfully, it sounds like you jumped about five hoops down the road. So we don't need to heat the high school yet tomorrow. We still have room at East High. At East High, at East Elementary.
I wasn't aware of that.
Sorry, wrong school. At East Elementary. And, you know, that's going to free up some space. And, you know, I think that for the time being, we could make that work, right? And I'm hearing from Dr. Salvo. So, yeah, and I just say that because I don't know that we need to worry about, because it's true, if we open up another building, there's a lot of other costs associated, including additional staff. But I don't know that we need to jump down that road quite yet.
All right, fair enough. I appreciate that. No, I've got my questions answered. Thank you.
You know, I would just say, in my opinion, I one hundred percent get it. I don't need to, you know, repeat what everybody else has said. I would like a finished project. I would like our kids to have a finished project. I would like our community to have a finished project. So that's where I'm at. So with all that said, does anybody have any other comments, suggestions, questions before we call for a vote?
I'll just add to Kyle's point. I kind of forgot that when I made my comments. On the money, that twelve point five is absolutely unacceptable, and I'm in struggle with ten million. And part of that kind of works its way into my concern with the timing and making sure that we've adequately reviewed our plans and that our incoming person who's going to be on construction has had a chance to weigh in on it.
That actually generated a push from me and Beth. Thanks for that. Hypothetically, what happens if we approve this bonding and then we get three bits back and we're like, absolutely not?
Yeah, so once you approve, if your voters approve authorization, you always have that authorization. There's no timeline to ever expend those dollars. So once the voters have approved an authorization, then that is always there for the district to access those resources.
But essentially, the issue is our debt.
Correct. Now, if you don't price those bonds, you have no debt. You just have the authorization at any point to go price those bonds. So there's no debt until we price the bond. So if the board wants to say we're not pricing the bonds yet, you have the authorization from your voters, and at any time then you can go price those bonds, and that's when obviously your payments will start, but not until then. You wouldn't cure interest until you actually priced them.
Okay. In that case, obviously, the impact is the PR telling our voters, hey, we're going to do a new high school. JK is too expensive, and then however much money we're paying you right now.
Correct.
Okay. So.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? All right. Six one. Thank you guys very much. Appreciate all the comments and the research and the questions. Good discussion. Okay. Next is the salary schedule. I believe this is just impact of minimum wage going up. So Dr. Salvo, do you have anything to add?
So as you know, Missouri, minimum wage went up, and although we don't have to abide by it as a school, this hurt to me. It's just honoring our employees and making sure that we're paying them at the minimum wage, which at this time is only this one group, but we want to make sure we raise that in accordance to minimum wage. Is that what you said?
So anybody have any questions? Does anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
We raised the, raised the salaries per Dr. Salvo's recommendation.
Okay, Austin's going to motion. Beth is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Is it an aye, Mary? Yes. Okay, so this next part is for discussion. This is the board's self-evaluation. Heidi and our former board member, Mike Bates, a couple of years ago, went through this and got us down from about a hundred questions to it looks like about thirty-three-ish. Oh yeah, it was a doozy. It was a doozy. But this is what we do every year to evaluate how we are working together and how effective that we think we are at serving our community and being involved and educated about the things that are being presented to us. So, hold on. Correct me if I'm wrong, but is this the group of questions that Kyle and Beth and I just got over? Like, this is a recent, since last year?
No, Michael and-
Yeah, Michael and I did it ages ago.
They gutted it initially.
Yeah, and they redid it. So this is the most recent.
That was like thirty-seven questions, I think, now? It was forty-something last year.
And five of them are common. They keep going down. So it's really only- Okay, my apologies. Sorry. It is the most updated version as far as we're concerned, and the reason- I've never served on that grid. Right. I had done it before, and then they were brand new, and that's why we pushed the whole evaluation because it was too early. There was no evaluation.
I was very shocked when I asked, why in the world is this survey so long and repetitive? For the response to be, oh, it used to be double.
So this is going to go out to us. When?
Do it tomorrow if you want.
But it was previously done June and July. When do we want to do it? No.
No, we would do it-
When's a good month to do it?
What you guys proposed in June or July when we would normally do it was that we bring it in February with the survey results. So that's why we're here now to make sure that's-
Okay.
Guys discuss, and you're like, you're good with the survey?
Yeah.
And then I would administer the survey and have the results available next month as that was your prior most-
Yeah, we didn't like it in June or July because anytime you have a new board, they're not, how can they evaluate in two months? They don't even know what they're doing. Right. Most haven't gotten training. So at this point, does anybody have any changes, suggestions, to questions or anything? Are we good to go?
Send it.
Cool. Austin, Mary, do you guys have anything to add?
Send it.
Send it, okay.
Cool.
Send it. Thanks, Elizabeth. All right, old business. Our CSEP reports. Thanks, everybody, for our administrators for putting these together for us. Does anybody have any questions or comments for West?
The monthly data is looking promising in the month, so, thanks.
Central office?
The tenants? Are above that?
Yeah. How about our spend report? High school? Middle school?
The only thing with middle school, math is looking good too. Obviously, ELA is still a challenge, and Holly and others, I'm interested in their view, like the share of what else is going on.
Sure. So currently, we have, the RPDC is coming into East, West, and Middle School right now. At the middle school, well, in all three of the buildings, supporting with RTI. But at the middle school, for ELA, really, like looking at our social studies classes, our science classes, how can we collectively support in this area? So they actually were in our buildings this week. They're coming back next week to follow up with our team. So they're pushing into classrooms and supporting in this area. We are also, there will be more to come, looking at, I've mentioned a few times about looking at some resources to support in this area too. So more to come on that as well. And then also at the middle school, and Taylor can probably speak to this better than I can, but the work that our interventionist is doing with our EL teacher, with our EL students in this area. So there's been kind of a class added. I don't know if you want to-
Yeah, so, you know, having a reading interventionist at a middle school level with a middle school model, when you pull kids out, they're essentially missing instruction from a content area where not all, if I'm pulling fifth graders, I could be pulling some fifth graders from Soul Studies. I could be pulling some from science, you know, not all of them take science at the same time. So therefore, some kids are missing some vital core content. Sometimes when we pull them for the reading intervention, which is also very, very important. So our intervention team, small but mighty, has come together and created a reading course for reading interventions to where this is now an elective course. So instead of a twenty-minute pullout for reading interventions, they're now getting fifty-five minutes of intervention time. And so we're seeing already in our week and a half of truly in-person with them, leaps and bounds from day one to today. She said it was the best day she's had in class with the kids yet. So I think that finding a way to have proper reading interventions at a middle school level, if you look at neighboring districts, which you have, reading intervention at a secondary level is very uncommon. So the fact that we have that resource, just figuring how it fits our schedule and our kids' needs, I think we've kind of found the bread and butter. So I'm hoping to see that continue.
Austin, do you have a question, comment?
Yes, thank you. How is the transition away from evidence-based going?
The building is much lighter. The kids are lighter. They feel as though they have common grounds to speak with their teachers and understand. They have common language again on what they're looking at, along with parents. There's just an understanding of what success looks like again. So it's much lighter. The building is a good place at the moment.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments from middle school? Thank you, guys.
I was going to say, I think that's such a great idea to make that an elective glass, to give it that extra time. And I'm so curious to see the benefit, to hear back on the benefit that you'll see from that extra time. That was such a good idea.
Anybody have anything for our East? All right, how about our Early Childhood Center? I have one thing. There's no pictures of kids on this one, and I'm very upset about it. Oh, I'm sorry.
You always have the kids.
I know, I know. I was stressed this morning.
We got a whole video.
Yeah. Yeah, you got a whole video.
I probably video.
Right. All right. Well, thank you guys all for putting all that data together for us. Let's see, and now we have our special education program evaluation.
It says gross. Okay, so this obviously is the R two District Annual Special Ed Program Evaluation that assesses and compares our district with the state of Missouri. This, keep in mind, goes back to our last year's. So last year's numbers and the majority of the data that's pulled for this report was from December of twenty-three. So I had to typo in here. It's twenty-two on the first, second page, so keep that in mind when you're looking at that. Just a couple of highlights that I want to hit on. Anywhere you saw not applicable, that's because it wasn't, only every three years are we, do they look at that. So next year will be scored on, in that area, and then that information will be reported the following year. So anywhere where you see NA, starting at early childhood, one of our biggest focuses is on our entrance and exit scores. Nicole and Riley and myself have been working with the state of Missouri because they have been revamping how we look at our kids. So when we have students that come in, we look at their social, emotional skills, their acquiring and using knowledge and skills, and taking appropriate action to meet needs. And we have a, it used to be a one-page paper where we just said, oh, yeah, they're at a two. Now it's a six-page form that we have to sit down with the parents after they've been there a couple of weeks. So that gives them a score, and then when they exit our program, when they go to kindergarten, we look at that again. We have been really focusing on making sure that we're seeing those growths in those students. We have a lot of students with a lot of significant needs and disabilities. And you can see on the third or fourth page of the packet, one hundred percent of our students showed growth. Now, where you see the next number is down, they're looking at, are your students at the same expectancy as their peers? Our students have disabilities, and they're not going to be caught up. I mean, it'd be great if all of our students were, but we've still had a pretty high percentage of students that have caught up. So that's great. And a lot of those kids go on to kindergarten, and when we test them in kindergarten, they no longer qualify. So that's great. And like I said, Nicole and Riley and myself have been working with Dussie to improve that form that we measure our students with, and helping them develop. And we've gone to, around and done some PD to other districts as well. Our child count for K through twelve continues to be above the state average. We're working on that. I don't think that's a lot, that is caused because of our over qualifying students. I looked today, and last year, we had forty-two students move in that had IEPs, and only twenty-nine moved out. So that was thirteen students. So when you're looking at three hundred-something students, you know, that, yeah. This year so far, yes.
When those students move in, are their IEPs reevaluated?
If they live in the state of Missouri, we can accept or deny their IEP. We deny all the IEPs because we don't want to have to work off of another school district's IEP. So we provide comparable services. Within thirty days, we have an IEP and give them the services we feel they need. If they're out of state, that means they haven't qualified for special services in Missouri, so we reevaluate them. And sure, we have students, some students that don't need eligibility in Missouri. Most likely, they'll meet eligibility in Missouri, and then we rewrite their IEP. Let's see. As far as placement in our environments that our students are in, we want them in at least a certain environment. we want them in that least restrictive environment where they can get the services that they need, where they're not out of the regular classroom or out of the regular curriculum. 64.2% of our students that have special education were in that least restrictive environment. Where our number gets high is our number of students that are in a separate placement. They don't attend our school. They attend a school that we contract with because they have needs that are more significant than we can... We just don't have the resources to help them. So a high percentage of those students were students that moved into our district as well, that were already in that placement.
What services are we... Do we primarily...
These students have a lot of social, emotional, behavioral needs that need, they need like intense therapy pretty much all day long. They're going to these schools and, yes, they're getting academics, but mostly it's social, emotional services that they're getting. And some of our homebound students too. That placement includes homebound students that have a significant medical need that they cannot be in the school setting. So we have to provide services to them. In math, last year for the state assessments, we were, our special education students, 16.8% were in those top two, advanced and proficient range, which the state, we scored significantly higher than the state. 12.7%, so that's great. Knowing that we are really working on math as well. ELA was almost right there with 13.4%, where the state was at 13.7. Any questions anybody had after you've been looked through? We had 87.5% of our special ed students graduate that were in that cohort. There were two students that needed just a few extra credits that they just had to come back. I think one of them graduated in December this year. Great. 0% dropout rate, which is awesome. That's always been our, that's our goal.
You said our special education population is above the state count.
Yes.
Did you say by what percentage?
The state is at 13, I think. And we were at 13.76 is the state, whereas we're at 16.38. Any other questions?
What about, I don't know if this is a desert primer or not, what about, you know, job placements and what...
Sure. So...
What that looks like after graduation.
So I wrote in here, all of our students have the chance to meet with a VOK rehab counselor. And we, in PRIETs, which is a program through Mizzou, they go, a lot of our transition services wrap around those kids going out and seeing what different kinds of jobs. They go on a lot of field trips. VOK rehab comes in and meets with all of our juniors and seniors that are going to graduate. You know, are you going to need support, you know, once you graduate? If you are going to go straight to a job, do you need support at that job? Do you need us to help you find a job? Maybe they just need help looking for a job. So there's some numbers in here too of our students that went to college. Transition services, is that what you're talking about?
What's the focus of it?
VOK rehab, vocational rehabilitation. A lot of ti... We have a summer program. Dr. Way let some of our students work at the high school last summer. We had a couple of students that worked over here at the ambulance. Heidi helped us set that up as well. We're going to set that up again this summer. We have our kiddos that are working at the coffee shop. So we do a lot of transition, making sure that every single student that graduates has a plan. Now, if they follow through with that, you know, once they leave, some of our kiddos, I don't have a way to get to St. Charles Community College, you know, or I don't have a way to get to my job. We try to help them with that as well and make sure they have VOK rehab. Because they kind of pick up, you know, once they graduate, special ed stuff. So VOK rehab is there like, hey, we're going to help you through to a job. I've had students that went and worked at Schnucks. They had a coach with them for the first six weeks. You know, they helped them learn how to bag or to stuff. And then that coach faded out. So we...
Ran through Mizzou, is that what you said?
Pardon me?
And it's ran through Mizzou?
Mizzou has a, it's called pre-employment transition services. There's a lady that comes, I think it's once a month. She comes to Pam's class and talks to those kids. She takes them on a ton of field trips. They go to Certainty. They go to Walmart. They go to different restaurants and learn about different jobs and what it takes to, if you want to work here, this is what you need to be doing now. So... Hops?
So they have a pathway as well of one of the graduation pathways in mind with what they're looking to post-high school, just like all our students.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you so much for you, Kelly. And then I know at the high school, all the counselors, you know, I witnessed that firsthand. Everybody really does deep link here that these students have good opportunities and that they're set up for success when they graduate from high school. So you guys do great work.
Yeah, it's, we have to do what's called a 180-day report, regular at, in special education. So Brittany, my process coordinator, she's on the phone. She's looking on Facebook, you know, hey, where are you working? Are you still, you know, I know you were going to St. Charles Community College, you know? What are you doing? And it's great to see those kids that are still there. Those kids that, hey, I said I was going to work wherever and that's Target and that's where I'm at, you know?
Does anybody have any questions or comments or other ones for Mrs. Brooks?
I do not. Thank you very much. I appreciate the work that went into that.
All right, moving on. Thank you so much, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly.
Okay, so now we're going to go into our consent agenda. Does anybody need to poll anything? I will be Austin and tell everybody to look at employment recommendations to make sure you're not related. It's pretty easy this month. All right, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold on a second. I did have to look at the... Before I vote, I did need to look at the employment.
You're fine.
You're fine.
Two seconds.
All right, I guess I'm going to be there. I agree. Okay, yes, I agree.
Okay.
I vote yes.
And I saw Mary's hand go up. So, all right. 7-0. All right. Wonderful. So now, while we are reading, we are going to vote to go into closed session in accordance with Section 610.021 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri to discuss one, legal actions, three, personnel, and 13 individually identifiable personnel records.
I'll make the motion to be going to closed session.
Second.
Roll call. Beth?
Yes.
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 Austin?
Yes.
Beth, Mary?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Okay. We'll do a five-minute bio break.